Good morning all. We are now in open session for the Los Angeles Port of Harbor Commissioners Special Meeting today, Thursday, April 2nd, 2020. Our first order of business is roll call. President Lee, Vice President Renwick, Commissioner Middleton, Commissioner Moreno Linares, Commissioner Perosi. We have confirmed our forum under item A. Next up, our Executive Director remarks with Jean Soroka.
Thank you, Amber. Good morning, Madam President, Commissioners, members of the public, distinguished guests, and Harvard Department staff. It's been some time since our last meeting, so I'll take you through a series of updates. The Port of Los Angeles continues to operate unabated. All of our marine terminals are in business, moving cargo with gates open. We're moving about 80% of normal volume of cargo for this time of year, mainly because China's manufacturing community has still not come back up to full capacity. In fact, that community is operating at about half of the capacity they normally do at this time of year. February's numbers, as were posted in the media, were down 23% year over year, and our outlook for the first quarter is to be down between 18% and 20% in total on our container business. Between the middle of February and April 1st, we had 41 vessel sailings that were canceled due to a lack of cargo, and that would represent about 25% of our normal ship calls here to Los Angeles during that period of time. While we may see a slight uptick in business towards the end of this month, it will be moderate and possibly curve back down again because our major retailers are said to be postponing, canceling, and deferring orders that otherwise would be coming through for fast fashion, summer season, back-to-school, to name three particular marketplaces in particular. So we'll be watching that very closely. But underscore, the movement of cargo through the port is going well. We have put drones up in the air onto the careful watch of Port Police Chief Tom Gacy to get a very close look at what our terminal landscape is, our rail connectivity, our truck gates, and other operational facets of the port, and I report to you that they're all running smoothly. With those canceled sailings, we have seen a little bit of a pileup of empty containers and some distressed exports, but the shipping liner community has responded with a resounding thought. We've begun to bring in the largest ships ever to call a Western Hemisphere port, beginning yesterday afternoon with the 23,000 TEU vessel at APMT. Those ships will call for three consecutive weeks in an effort to evacuate empties, distressed exports, and begin to rebuild our export customer base with cargo moving back to China in particular and Asia broadly. This is very important because the shipping container community has really rallied around trying to make sure that we find any abnormalities, bottlenecks, and smooth them out as quickly as possible, and the liner shipping company bringing in the 23,000 TEU ships have really answered the call of what we had asked. Everything we are doing today is around COVID-19 and keeping our business up and running. Since we last spoke, state, county, and mayoral municipal emergency orders have closed down all nonessential businesses in the eyes of the state leadership. The port is considered in all those orders essential business, and so are our partners, the liner shipping companies, terminal operators, railroads, truckers, warehouses, forwarders and brokers, cargo owners. We needed to get some clarifying information into documents that were provided by the Department of Homeland Security just last Friday, and with great help from people like Fran Inman, our State Secretary of Transportation, Kim David Levitik, Avine Sharma, we were able to smooth out that language to make sure that DC's warehouses and truckers know that they can be on the job any, every day without fear of being pulled aside by the law. As we look forward with COVID-19, first and foremost in our plan is the health and safety of our citizenry, our workforce, staff, and those who visit us here at the port. All the efforts around following key medical advice are being followed. The PMA and the ILW have reached agreements coastwide on how we must maintain sanitized and clean equipment that moves cargo, communication devices to keep our workers consistent. Inso much, two weeks ago, it was brought to our attention that the marine terminal operators in Long Beach and Los Angeles did not have sufficient cleaning supplies or solution. That's where we jumped into action, and with the great assistance of Los Angeles Department of Water and Power General Manager Marty Adams, we brought in 700 gallons of industrial bleach. Tim Clark and our construction and maintenance team under Tony Giogello's led leadership diluted that product into 32-ounce bottles that senior staff combed across the Southland at Home Depot and Lowe's stores to bring back to our C&amp;M team so they could fill them up. Those bottles were then given to the PMA for distribution across the terminals at the ports of Long Beach and Los Angeles. An absolutely series of heroic efforts by the people involved to make sure longshore women and men are safe on the job. Now with that note, we did have one dispatcher from Local 13 test positive, and the results came out last night for the coronavirus. We immediately put our contingencies into action. The PMA swiftly acted to sanitize the hiring halls at both locations. Comebacks were put into place so folks could go back on the job last night and continue to work our vessels and yards without interruption. And today, the hiring hall process was put back into place, and all jobs are reported filled this morning for the first shift. Also to report to you is that Sunday evening, the 30th of March, Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti nominated me to become the city's chief logistics officer concurrent with my responsibilities as executive director at the Port of Los Angeles. The role is designed to assist the healthcare and medical communities with the products they sorely need to attend to our ill. That will include purchase order management, supplier work, connections with manufacturing sources, as well as procurement activities. We bring to the marketplace a suite of services from an IT standpoint that no one else has in the nation, led by the platform of the Port Optimizer and now the development of an IT system that's working directly with the suppliers, healthcare, and medical communities. This project is called Logistics Victory Los Angeles or Love LA, and its history is around the Victory ships that were built right here in San Pedro during World War II with Kaiser Steel. And today, Kaiser Permanente is one of the great hospital companies in the state of California and beyond that has offered to work with us and help guide us through the early days of the service delivery that we need to have for our medical and healthcare communities. So we're off to a fast start. We'll be ordering products, and if I may, I'd like to make a plea to the viewing public. We are in need of N95 face masks, ventilators that are both intrusive and non-intrusive, latex gloves, isolation gowns, IV drip components and apparatus, and so many other products. If you have an opportunity or you know someone that can help facilitate us getting those products to the medical community, please email us at love la@portla.org. That's L-O-V-L-A at P-O-R-T-L-A dot org. So much other work is happening here as well. We're trying to do our level best to manage the cruise lines as they continue to anchor ships around the world. Here in Los Angeles, we're working daily with our cruise customers, and while the industry itself has paused its business for 60 days, we're still coordinating very closely on all fronts. The work of our employees is also very important as well, and as mentioned at the top of this commentary, today, about half of our employees are sworn in civilian peace officers and construction and maintenance groups that are out building our projects here at the port. Those folks, about half of our population in the Department of Employee Colleagues and Partners, are on the job in the field every day while managing the necessary guidance from the medical experts, physical distancing, and protection, personal protection equipment at all areas of our work. About 40% of our staff right now is telecommuting or working from home and following the guidelines directed by Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti. The small remaining staff is rotating in and out of the Harbor Administration Building to manage all tasks necessary for our customers and industry on the shipping side of the business. We continue as a leadership team to meet every morning, covering those three areas of our cargo, including labor, our cruise business, and our employee base plus other important matters. And that concludes my comments for this morning, open for any questions.
Thank you, Jean, and congratulations on your additional responsibilities. We know that you'll do an excellent job in helping our region in this effort against COVID. Do any of the commissioners have a question? Commissioner Middleton?
Good morning, all. I echo President Lee's comments. I have a comment and two questions for Mr. Soroka. First and foremost, congratulations on the fabulous job that you, the leadership team, and all the employees of the port are doing. I watch Mayor Garcetti's 5:15 press conference every day, and I hope everyone else does. Wonderful source of information. So it was very exciting to hear that you were named the chief logistics officer. I'm so proud to be in this area, to be a commissioner, and just want to congratulate you again on the fabulous job you're doing and the entire staff as well in these difficult times. The two questions I have is I've heard chatter about tariff relief. Is it going to happen? Is it not going to happen? Whatever. So that's one issue. And secondly, on the question of the Mercy, again, so proud to have the ship here and see the port contributing in that way by providing berth space. But I have questions about berth 93. I don't understand, do the cruise terminals pay rent only when ships are in? So with the passenger lines gone, does that mean we have a loss of rent from those? And again, although we're very grateful that the Mercy is here, is the US government or any other entity paying rent for that berth space, or what's happening to berth 93 business-wise through the time of the crisis? Thank you.
Yeah, on your, on your second question, Commissioner Middleton, yes, we will take a hit on revenue across the board. I think we're quite fortunate at this time to be managing about 80% of normal business on the container side as well as bulk, liquid bulk, and refrigerated perishable goods. But all of our other businesses are out right now, and that will take a hit to our revenue scheme across the board. There is some tariff relief coming from Washington, but again, China's ability to ramp up production during this global pandemic has been rather challenging. And now, as we move forward into traditional retail season, we're going to see a deep softening of those purchase orders coming through the system, which simply means a lighter amount of cargo than we've ever been used to. I believe between the ill-advised tariff regime in Washington against China and this global pandemic, we will see the knock-on effects economically through the balance of 2020 and more than likely into the year 2021. But it's because of our very strong fiscal policy, as guided by our CFO Marla Blevins, that we are in absolutely fantastic financial shape. But as we move forward, we must be even more prudent in managing while the revenue streams will look a lot different than they did today.
And could you comment on the question? Again, very grateful that the Mercy is here, but is there any kind of legal relationship between the port and the government as far as docking space, or is it simply almost an eminent domain question of they're using that space?
There will be ongoing work between the federal government, the United States Navy, and the Port of Los Angeles. I'll turn it over to Mike DiBernardo, who along with Tony Giogello were just spectacular in their work with the Navy and so many others, especially our allied agencies, to make this happen. And for the public as well, the United States Navy ship Mercy is a 1,000-bed floating hospital with 80 IC units, 800 medical crew, and 80 ship crew aboard. We met with the Acting Secretary of the Navy on Tuesday morning here at the Port of Los Angeles, who described the connection process of the Mercy coming in and the work between all of our agencies as nothing short of spectacular. We began admitting patients from hospitals on the land side Sunday, and it'll take us several weeks to ramp up as we begin to see our patients move from those land side hospitals to the Mercy. And a reminder for all, the patients that will be admitted to the Mercy will be from hospitals specifically and non-COVID in their illnesses. I'll turn it over now to Mike to talk a little bit about how we started the relationship with the Navy and the ongoing day-to-day operations that he and Tony have set up. Mike?
Thank you, Jean, and good morning, Commissioners. Yes, all last week, we worked extensively with the US Navy to bring the ship into the port. As you know, cruise ships are not operating right now, but we do have some cruise ships that do come in to take on stores because there are crew members still onboard the ships. So as you can see out there today, there is one cruise ship that has come in to take in ship stores, but that's the only thing they're doing, and they're going back out to anchor. Birth 93, we found not to be active at the moment, and in working closely with the Navy, finding that place to be very attractive because it had a building in place where they can bring in patients, process them, and then move them onboard the ship as a handoff to the ship's crew and hospital staff. So Birth 93 was ideal for that, that process, and since there was no activity with cruise ships, we felt that was the best location to put them at. So it is a process that we've been working closely with the US Navy on, and at this time, we have been doing all the necessary things to keep that operation going. So if you have any further questions, happy to answer those.
And for the questions, Commissioner Perosi, you have your hand up.
Yeah, just first of all, Jean, thank you to you and the leadership, the mayor and everybody for what you're doing. You know, we're going through similar things where I work, and I can, I could just imagine, you know, the strain on everybody at the, at the port and the industry. So I just want to compliment everybody for, you know, their leadership, being cool under pressure and things of that nature. It's very important right now that cooler heads prevail and keep people focused, and I do appreciate the mayor's daily conferences and letting us know where we're at as a city. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. One is, and have you comment on one item in particular, it just shows the importance of our strategic plan to keep the infrastructure up and ready so we can handle the unforeseen such as the Mercy coming into our ports. I do want to compliment everybody on that strategic view on making sure our infrastructure is ready for whatever comes our way. There's been a lot of questions out there on this recent train derailment. I thought it would be at least good for you to comment on that and where we are and next steps, if any, going forward for the remainder of this time, not just through COVID-19, but having the Mercy here in the port. So I'd like to just have you comment on that if you can. Thank you.
And this is a, this is a very interactive setting that we're managing here through Zoom, and there are also, Commissioner, so many other people to thank. We've got a volunteer group that is helping me now on Love LA, working the supplier domain to try to get as much product to our hospitals and medical facilities as we can, scouring through leads of suppliers, and so many of those folks work in other areas of the port but have chipped in through volunteer work to help us out. And also, one of the real stars of this epidemic and crisis response team here at the Port of Los Angeles has been Los Angeles Port Police Chief and Head of Public Safety, Tom Gacy. His tireless work with the allied agencies and calm demeanor have really led us through some very rocky times in the past weeks and months, and his deep counsel to the senior leadership team on how we're to perform in situations like this has been invaluable. So on your question, Commissioner Perosi, I'll turn it over to Chief Gacy to give a little bit of detail on the, the incident with the PHL locomotive. Chief?
Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you, Jean. As you know, on Tuesday morning at 12, I'm sorry, Tuesday afternoon, 12:35 just afternoon, the same day that the Acting Secretary of the Navy was here to visit the Mercy, we had a very unfortunate event where a PHL employee was at the controls of a locomotive and drove the locomotive off of a siding. The locomotive traveled about 350 feet toward Swinford Street, came to arrest. But let me point out, it came nowhere near the USS Mercy. The act is, was initially under investigation by the Los Angeles Port Police, FBI, Los Angeles Police Department, US Coast Guard, and CBP. Ultimately, as a result of the investigation and interviews later that day, the AUSA Assistant US Attorney for Los Angeles accepted the case, took responsibility for the arrest and prosecution. Charges will be filed this week in a US federal court, and that investigation continues with some details I can't discuss at this time, but we'll be able to brief the Commission on at a later time. In terms of the USS Mercy, USS, USNS Mercy, Port Police and Coast Guard have worked extensively with the Navy and Department of Defense to ensure that the site is secure, that the US Navy personnel are supported, and the US Marines that are assigned to security onboard the boat and in the area around the boat are supported. Our officers are deployed 24/7 in that area that's closed except for that operation. And as Jean has pointed out today and at other times, it's a site for non-COVID patients that are being transferred from area hospitals to offset the loads of existing hospitals in and around Los Angeles. It is not intended to be a COVID treatment site. Extensive measures are in place to ensure those patients are screened, as well as the treatment staff on the, on the hospital ship. This operation will be ongoing for at least 60 days, and with the support of the Harvard Department and the City of Los Angeles through the mayor's office and the governor's office to sustain this operation to serve our regional hospitals and communities.
Thank you so much, Chief. Commissioner-
I just wanted, yes, I'm sorry. I just want to say thank you. I wanted the public to hear from you on this, since there's been a lot in the news. So thank you again for the details and your leadership. Look forward to future items that we'll be working together and feel very safe under your leadership and the team we have at the port. Thank you.
So just, and let me thank the Commission for, and Jean and the executive team for their ongoing support that has allowed us to do this successfully with, with the Navy under very unusual circumstances, and being assured that I'll pass your kind comments on to all the staff that are working on this. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Chief. Please do, and very well done. Thank you. Any other questions from the Commissioners on the Executive Director's report? Okay, hearing none, let's move on.
Wait, wait, wait. Sorry. I was, I was raising my hand. I, I, sorry. It's Ed. Hope all's well, everybody. Thank you very much. I just wanted to say that I had the privilege of going down to the port and seeing the team that has been built around pre- the city of Los Angeles. And these people are, you know, are at the port, and they're working their full-time jobs, some in the office, some from home. And in addition to their full-time jobs and taking care of their families, they put together a team of about 18 people at the port from all different levels, from the most senior folks to the most junior folks who are, who are, you know, building out effectively a city department on the fly and doing a great job of it. So I really just wanted to thank the excellent work that's being done. I also wanted to give a shout out to Harbor Freight Tools, who Jean was talking about the supplies that were provided and how, you know, how, in Jack, you know, Jean has been showing up at various, at various different Home Depots throughout Southern California. But Harbor Freight Tools donated a tremendous amount of materials. You know, we picked up the phone, called them, and boom, the materials were, were at our doorstep the next day in, in order to help, you know, help, help keep the port running. So we, I just wanted to give a shout out to Harbor Freight Tools. So thank you very much, everyone, for the excellent work they're doing.
And President Lee, just a couple of other people to thank. We don't have enough time for everyone, but we've also tried to be very public throughout this pandemic in making sure we over-communicate to our customers, our staff, and so many others who have an interest here at the Port of Los Angeles. And I'd like to thank Arlie Baker, Philip Sandfield, Lee Smith, and so many others who have made that communication possible. Don Haynes in particular, who is putting out content with studio quality precision. These folks are really trying to make sure that we have our message out there. We've been accessible to the media and to the business community, and equally as important to our great staff here at the Port of Los Angeles, who we can't see every day now, but we can communicate with in mediums like this and with direct-to-internet video that we're sharing on overall strategy, tactical approaches, what we're doing in case of certain events, and how we need their support. So again, thanks to all those folks. Regina Grant in particular has been working around the clock trying to find supplies as well, both for here at the port as well as our medical community, and a couple of folks like Next Trucking, Operation USA, and others have come through with very strong donations of PPE-type supplies for staff, our workers on the docks, and our healthcare community.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
And that'll conclude my remarks for this morning, and thank you for all the work that you have done collectively as a Commissioner behind the scenes in helping us on the ground.
Thank you, Jean. Amber?
Thank you. Next item, C, comments from the public on non-agenda items. I was just advised there are none. Our phone line as well as our email, we have a call center downstairs. No calls have been received, no voicemails have been received, and our, no emails have been received. So we're going to move on to item D, which is report from the neighborhood councils, which also has nothing to report. Item E, report to the Commissioners. We do have some items that are going to be held over to the next meeting for reporting out. Item F, Board Committee Reports for the Alameda Corridor Governing Board Meeting on March 12th. Vice President Renwick?
Yeah, so we had a board meeting for the Alameda Corridor. The most significant development is that we have chosen a new CEO who's going to start on April 22nd. We're very excited about Michael Louis joining the team and leading the team. He's already developed an initial plan, you know, immediately after he takes over. He's been in the industry for a long time. He's incredibly smart and has, you know, we spent a lot of time picking from a national base, you know, we, there was, it was a nationwide search. We, and we ended up taking a look at about 100 different people, and, and he was by far the best. So we're incredibly excited about that. The next step is to, we, our current CFO also is going to retire, and so now we are moving on next step, which is to find a replacement CFO. But we're very excited. That's the biggest development from, from back there.
Thank you. Item G, approval of the minutes for both the special and second special meeting of March 5th, 2020.
Any questions or edits, comments on the minutes? Hearing none, may please have a motion and a second to approve.
We're moved.
Second pick.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any- Any abstentions? That motion carries. Thank you.
Item H, Presentations. There are, uh, no presentations in this category today, nor are there Level 1 Coastal Development Permits under Category I. Next up, Item J, Board Reports of the Executive Director. Uh, we do have nine consent items on the agenda today. I understand, uh, there may be some questions on one and six. Therefore, two through five and seven through nine will be read into the record collectively unless there are additional questions. Hearing none, we're going to start with Consent Item Number Two. Is a resolution for the approval of Permit Number 947 with Serta Fresh Foods, Inc. Item Three is a resolution for the approval of revocable permit number 19-09 between the City of Los Angeles Harbor Department and the Southern California Marine Institute. Item Four is a resolution to approve Permit Number 932 with Southern California Edison Company. Item Five is a resolution for the approval of First Amendment of Foreign Trade Zone General Purpose Operating Agreement Number 15-3306 between the City of, the City of Los Angeles Harbor Department and Shanker, Inc., FTC 202 Site 41. Item Seven is a resolution for the award and approval of construction contract with Sully Miller Contracting Company for San Peter Waterfront Harbor Boulevard from Minor Street to SB Slip Roadway Improvement, specification number 2774. Item A is, is a resolution waiving the potential conflict for Alvarado Smith's representation of O'Leary Energy Corporation. And Item Nine is a resolution for the adoption of resolution implementing city council action in response to Merrick Arsetti's Declaration of Local Emergency related to COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you. May please have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items two through five and seven through nine.
So moved.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? That motion carries. Question on, um, Agenda Item One?
Uh, Agenda Item Number Two is, excuse me, Agenda Item Number One is a resolution for order resetting compensation under Permit Number I, uh, 897 with Catalina Channel Express, Inc. And I do believe we have, uh, Mike Galvin and Steve Otero available for those questions.
Commissioner Middleton?
Um, yes. I had three issues on this one. First, on page three, issue one. Page three says that the current annual rent for all parcels is 322,446. There was a settlement agreement. It was well set out in the resolution. Thank you to the staff. It says the percentage rent is not effective until July 25th, 2023. So my first question was, what is percentage rent? I spoke with Mike Galvin. He explained that it was a percent of gross receipts, but nowhere in the resolution does it say what that percent is. Mr. Galvin, could you please tell us what is the percentage, the percent of gross receipts that the percentage rent will be based on?
Yes, the percentage rent will be based on the gross receipts for ferry operations at 5% and gross receipts on the freight operations at 2%.
Thank you. Next question, um, it also says there's, I think, 13 parcels involved, and the CPI increases on parcels one through seven do not commence until July 25th, 2003. The resolution does say that there's a one-time catch-up CPI increase for 2019 through 2023. And I just wanted to get on the record, is that cumulative? In other words, we go back and pick up the 2019 CPI, and then is it built on every year compounding? So by 2023, we see the results of four years CPI?
Yes, that's correct, for those parcels.
Okay. And then finally, it wasn't totally clear, but fixed minimum rate rent goes up to $512,851. Again, great increase, good job. Um, and it says it's effective. Now, that effective date is, is July 25th, 2019. So we have seven, eight months now of accumulated rent at the higher rate. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's retroactive.
Okay. No further questions. Thank you, Mr. Galvin.
If there are no further questions on the item, may please have a motion and a second to approve Agenda Item One.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any abstentions? That motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, item number six is a resolution for the adoption of the final initial study negative declaration and approval of the Pacific Crane Maintenance Company Chassis Repair and Storage Facility Project at 895 Rees Avenue, Los Angeles Harbor Department, application for port permit number 180628-111, State Clearinghouse number 2020019025. And for questions, we have Chris Cannon and Justin Houtman on, on waiting.
Thank you. Commissioner Middleton?
Thank you. Um, first of all, preliminarily, I want to state what a really important agenda item I think this is. The question of chassis maintenance and repair and chassis storage has been one that I think has plagued the harbor for many years. So it's great that we're having this centralized location that's going to be in the works. Um, I had a couple of different questions, and I just want to be sure this is on the record because I view this as such an important item. First, the nature of this resolution, as I understand it, it's a negative declaration, and I want Mr. Cannon to confirm, my understanding is that there's no EIR necessary, that the negative declaration means, um, that there wasn't anything that was of significant impact such as to require an EIR, and this is simply the first step to the development of the prop- property, and that there is no public hearing required under CEQA. Do I correctly understand all of that, Mr. Cannon?
Yes, yes. The, the negative declaration, its purpose is to, um, uh, determine mega-statements, a declaration by the lead agency, that there are no significant impacts that are, have been identified for this project, unlike an EIR where you may evaluate potential for significant impacts. In this case, there were none. And so that's the purpose of a negative declaration. It's a declaration by the lead agency to that effect.
Okay. And then as a follow-up to that, my further understanding is that this resolution before us doesn't deal with the lease, the terms, the rent. This is simply a first step. And in connection with that, I wanted to know, because I do view this as such a significant project, do we have a timetable for development of this?
Oh, I, I can answer that, Commissioner. Uh, so this is, as, uh, Chris mentioned, this is for an environmental assessment of that particular property. We are still working with, uh, PCMC on negotiating a deal, uh, that we'll bring forward, uh, in a permit to the board for consideration.
Thank you. And what about, do we have anything on the, did that question encompass the timetable as well? Nothing definite yet?
So we, uh, we've been having ongoing meetings with PCMC, and we'll continue to do that. Unfortunately, with the COVID-19, uh, case, they have been busy, uh, and we have not had a chance to meet with them, but we plan to meet with them in, in about two weeks.
Okay. Next question, because, um, this does potentially deal with environmental impacts, I wanted to be sure again that the public is clear, that there was considerable outreach. I think the report says that this, um, negative declaration was sent to over 90 organizations, and there were only two comment letters received from the Bureau of Sanitation and the Department of Transportation. Is that correct?
Yeah, and yes, it is. There were only two comment letters. The Bureau of Sanitation comment letter was simply an acknowledgement of receiving the document, and the, uh, Bureau of Transportation letter was really an acknowledgement of what they thought were, um, benefits to the project.
Okay. Next, I had a couple of questions about the basis of the negative declaration. Um, thank you for all the materials that you sent, Figure Two, Transmittal One, all really helpful. On Transmittal One, um, there's a, I'm particularly concerned about the environmental factors that are considered. Page 32 is a chart of all the environmental factors. None of them are marked. So when I looked at page four, none of them were checked off as applicable. When I looked at page four, five, it says there's 2,400 one-way truck trips in a 24-hour period. And then page four, eight, says it's 1,300 additional vehicle miles. Could you comment on the significance of that? Is this going to create more pollution or less? What do those numbers mean? Because that's really, to me, the heart of the negative declaration, since we've had so much discussion about pollution in the harbor.
Well, the, the number of truck trips identified are, um, first of all, there would be no increase in truck trips, uh, coming in and out of the harbor district. The analysis determined that the, uh, in, the, uh, uh, amount of traffic, traffic coming in and out of the harbor district would not change. So this project would not increase overall traffic, uh, into the port. There would be a difference in routing within the port. Um, there would be, uh, a stop-off at this location to pick up, you know, uh, chassis. Um, the analysis determined that this stop-off actually would, at a centralized location, would actually, uh, provide some efficiencies, um, for the operation of the terminals. They're able to do a stop-off. There's a slight increase in traffic volume by virtue of the short distance, uh, that they have to travel to do the stop-off, but the overall, um, im- improvement in efficiencies and especially the, uh, less activity at the terminal itself is determined to have been an overall benefit. This is something that was acknowledged by, by, uh, Caltrans, Department of Transportation, which indicated that they improved, they indicated an improvement that was likely in this project, and they applauded this and hoped that it would go forward.
Okay. And then just out of curiosity, um, the report, again, well-written, has a lot of data in it. It says that 70% of that, 70% of whatever, the volume, the quantity, whatever, of this chassis repair facility, um, will benefit or be useful to APM. Um, where do other terminals in the Port of LA go for chassis repair and maintenance?
So I, I can answer that as well. So, uh, I know that the report does say for APMT, but, uh, in discussions with PCMC, they have said that, uh, they will consider it for other terminals in the Terminal Island area as well. And then to add to, uh, Chris's comment, uh, we, we feel that having these off-dock yards, you're going to have a chassis that's good-order shape, so that when it goes to the terminal, uh, the total visit time for the truck driver when he exits the terminal is going to be much quicker because it's going to be a good-order chassis. So that's the benefit of having these off-dock yards with, uh, good-order chassis. So, um, uh, we feel that PCMC is going to be working with other terminals within Terminal Island as well to assist in their efforts. We are looking at other sites. We did put out an RFP for other locations as well for chassis yards, and we're continuing to work with those potential, uh, bidders, uh, to see if we can come to an agreement with them.
Analysis of the document also considered the potential for other terminals. Um, it indicated that they, uh, would, would, a lot of the business would go to and from APMT, but we did analyze, um, uh, and, uh, routes traveling to other terminals on, on, uh, Terminal Island, as Mike indicated. That was part of the environmental analysis.
Okay. Thank you. And finally, the recommendation is there's six or seven points listed, um, for legality and clarification. But basically, what staff is asking is that the board adopt the negative declaration and approve the project. Is that correct?
It is exactly correct. It's approving the, uh, declaration, approve of the project.
Okay. No, no additional questions.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions? Seeing no hands, may please have a motion and a second to approve Agenda Item Six.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. Thank you.
So, uh, the board will now move into closed session to discuss the items listed on the printed agenda. Uh, before we go into closed session, I want to announce that item number one, Mr. Renwick is, uh, recused. And then, uh, one of the three cases listed on item six will not be discussed today. Um, other than that, we will go through the agenda as posted, and, um, we will, uh, report out according to law, anything that takes place according to law. Thank you.
Madam President, before we go, I knew this would happen, um, I'd like to thank some other people.
Please.
Work on, uh, getting the language right with the Department of Homeland Security. I'd like, like to also thank our Jennifer Cohen, who spent tireless hours working with Fran and many, many others on that effort. I'd also like to thank our great IT team for not only what they've put us into today so we can communicate, but with all the customer and media communications we've been doing over the past weeks, specifically Lance Canachero and Andy Wooster, uh, the work that they've done, Tony Jong as well, Brent, and so many others have just made this new area for us to communicate that much easier. So thanks to all. And lastly, with respect to the Mercy, I'd like to thank Octavio and the, all of the Ports America staff who run our cruise terminal on a normal basis, but we're superheroes in making sure that the Mercy came in and can do its job with our physicians and attendees to all the ill that are coming onboard.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mike D, did you have something?
Uh, no. Gene, Gene mentioned it, uh, as far as Ports America, they've been fantastic through this whole process with the Mercy and been out there every day of the week, uh, for 20 hours a day in, uh, helping to get this, uh, ship, uh, in shape for, uh, for patients coming onboard. So thank you, Octavio and team.
Great. Thank you very much. I think we'll now move into our closed session meeting room.
Um, I, I can't see anyone, but I understand that everybody's there, so I'll, I'll just move forward if that's the best advice to, uh, indicate that the board, uh, can concluded closed session. Item number one, Mr. Renwick was recused and was not in the room. Uh, item number six, we only discussed two of the three cases that were listed. Uh, the board discussed every other item and took no reportable action, and that concluded our closed session for the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Jana. Gene, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Sure. Just a couple more thank yous, Madam President. Uh, first to Jana and our city attorney team. As we've been moving through the COVID-19 environment so swiftly with so much fluidity, they have stood by us, working side by side on so many important issues, city-related emergency orders, et cetera. And Jana herself has been part of our leadership team meetings, uh, every morning at 0900. I'd also like to thank Rachel Campbell. Rachel works in our media department and has been the steward of our social and mainstream media broadcasting, whether it's on Twitter, Facebook, uh, et cetera, as well as LinkedIn. And she has just done an outstanding job branding us as the most communicative court during these trying times. So thanks to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jana. Thank you, Gene, to everyone on your teams for making this such a smooth day. And of course, we Commissioners would not even be able to make it onto this meeting or figure out Zoom or get any of these technical, um, things done in order to be able to remote, work remotely as we have without the Commission crew. So Julie, Amber, Joey, um, and Chris, thank you so much. Thank you to Andy and Brent for all of the IT work and coordinating these meetings for us. Um, it really is a pleasure to be able to work this way and stay connected and know that you all are doing such incredible work still, um, at HAB and wherever you are remotely during these times. So thank you very much. Um, if there is nothing else, I am pleased to adjourn this meeting at 11:38 AM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1782.88]